See if the council wanted to take action on that. I'm giving you a copy of our subdivision ordinance. It states on page four that no building permits are to be issued until final plan is approved and filed with record. And there's, according to the ordinance, there's to be a preliminary plan. And then, once it's submitted and approved by the council, the engineering review is done. And then there follows a final plan review, or final plan. And it is, the final plan is then reviewed by the council. If it's approved, it's filed with the deed records at the county clerk's office in Ellis County, Waxahachie. The enforcement provision is also, I think, on page four. Which states the city attorney shall be, when directed by the city council, institute appropriate action to enforce provisions or standards. There is not to be construction work prior to the approval of the final plan of the subdivision. I know that for certain reasons, there have been streets constructed and water lines and I think sewer lines and maybe even street lights have been set up there in this subdivision. But no plant was ever filed, and so it was never approved by the city. And so by this action that we are proposing, we'll have our city attorney be authorized to prevent any further improvements there. If, if the store's trying to do that, so that's what it's for.
Is that that subdivision the main district, or is it?
Well, it's on Water Street. The houses that are actually right against Water Street, that front Water Street is a different subdivision.
Oh, okay.
Entirely. The one behind it is the one we're talking about.
Okay.
That joins the cemetery property.
Okay, so processes and procedures are necessary to ensure that whatever work is being done, whatever function is being performed, that it's being done correctly, right? So that's why, that's why they exist. And it also allows us to be more objective in our dealings. It takes the subjectivity out of things. This is the way it is supposed to be done. And so if we don't intend to enforce our ordinances, then why do we even have them on the books? It's just a mere exercise in fertility. And so I think we have to be about the business of enforcing what we have on, on, on record in terms of our expectations for all people that are doing business and are living in the city. So including this ordinance.
Well, our purpose is set forth on page one of the ordinance itself. And that is to provide for orderly, safe, and healthy development of the area. And that's why it's, we have engineering review because we want to make sure that the sewage actually gets to the sewer plant. There's not drainage problems, traffic problems, things of that nature. It's just not appropriate to start building all that before it's even been approved.
And then it becomes problematic.
Yes, and could be something that the taxpayers might have to finance the correction of.
So there was no civil engineering done on this?
There was a review and a letter was sent about three years ago and it never was responded to appropriately, so.
An approval letter from our side? I don't understand a letter from?
No, it was a letter that sent forth all the questions that our engineer had. And things that needed to be addressed or corrected. Some of the things they asked for, they said were not on the plans that they sent the engineer. And it, it never went anywhere. They just started building.
Okay.
So what we're proposing in this, this agenda item is to authorize our attorney to do anything he needs to to keep them from doing anything further out there. But as far as whether the city accepts what's already built, no, we haven't accepted it. And we can't do that until, they have to go back through the whole process. And hopefully for their sake, if they do that, then it'll be up to code. But if it's not, you know, we're at liberty to require modifications. But we'll cross that bridge we get to.
Yeah, and then moving forward, if we could have a system of checks and balances in place.
Right.
That, that would, could prevent folk from circumventing the systems. If there's a, a means by which we can check on that.
It's for your peril.
Veritas.
Veritas, sorry. You're sitting in his spot.
There you go. Okay, I just sold that for him.
I pointed at her, she's looking at me. Do we have a motion? Or is there further discussion?
Do we need further discussion?
No. Okay.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we authorize the city attorney to enforce the City of Milford ordinance, number 347-18 regarding the proposed subdivision on East Water Street. Property ID 25, 256767, approximately 7.03 acres. And property ID number 181111, approximately 2.4111 acres.
I second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number eight, we've already taken care of. Discussing possible action to employ a water department clerk. Think this needed. If there's any discussion, we can have that, or we can proceed to rule, act on motion.
Right, on motion. Yeah, I think I'm in. I make a notion, I make a motion to, I don't have it in front of me. To, uh, employ a, action to employ a water department clerk.
I accept it.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? We'll set the, publish that notice as soon as we can and get that in motion. Number 10, discussing possible action to authorize Mayor Bruce Perryman and City Secretary Kim Schlerad to sign us for note with Harmony Bank. Notice for how much, Kim?
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand, and we pay every news every, at an interval of one year or?
Every year.
And we pay interest on it. We're at liberty, I think, to pay down on the balance if we want to. That's discretionary, but they want to have a, Harmony Bank wants us to have a, this motion that gives authorization for us to sign every year, every time it renews. So that's, that's what this is about. We already have the note, so.
Do y'all counter-sentry?
I think they require both of us, don't they? You got two, two signatures. But we have to be reauthorized by the council every, every time it renews.
I make the motion for Mayor Perryman, Kim to be, to be, to, of the account.
I second the motion.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and we'll get our minutes to them, so they know that we did this. We'll get that taken care of. Number 11, discussing possible action to appoint a mayor pro temp. So this is where I get quiet, y'all decide who wants to. What do you want for a mayor pro temp?
I nominate Ms. Perry, Ms. Patricia.
I guess I don't really have a dog in the fight, I guess, on this one, that much. I wanted it to be myself in the beginning. And the reason why was because of other times and other people who have held a position and not getting all that information down to the rest of the council. And the rest of the council not knowing what was going on with the city because certain, certain things were being held back and weren't being discussed with the rest of the council, with the rest of the people. So I'm okay if you are going to run for it. But I will say that I'm putting my hat in the name because I know that I can trust myself as to not be that person to ever say anything or not, or hold something back from this city because my intentions are only for the good for the city. I, I am determined that we do not let that happen to this city again. So that's my two cents worth on it. I'll vote for, go with some vote on it.
And I have every confidence that everyone that's seated around this table have the best interest of the city and its citizens at heart. And that, that I am surrounded by people of integrity and people that will speak truth and seek justice and fairness. And so, you know, with that being, with that being said, if that's the criteria, then I think everybody around this table is ideally suited for mayor pro temp. It just becomes a matter of who's going to, who's going to carry that banner, that mantle themselves.
I think that Todd has good background for this. And I would like to, because, or, uh,
Vote.
Vote for Todd.
Okay, I'll vote for Dave.
He's been here.
Okay, now y'all will do this. Well, I can do a roll call vote if you want to do it that way.
Sure.
All right, start with you favorite.
Mr. Todd, it really don't matter, both of them, both of them. So I guess.
Because he has the history, you have the history.
I appreciate it. Okay, we have Todd. You've nominated yourself, so I guess you'll vote for yourself. Shame you.
Thank you.
Okay. And Ms. Lockhart? Dave? Claire, we have four votes for Todd de Villeneuve and one for Ms. Bird. So Todd de Villeneuve will be the mayor pro temp. So we'll move to departmental reports. I moved that to the back because we had so many other things in front of us. And didn't pay the attorney to sit here and listen to that. Probably would have made y'all have to tell us. We'll start with, I guess, parks and streets, water sanitation, Swish?
Mayor, wait, do we, do we all need a motion on appointing them? Or if we did, would somebody make one?
I don't think you made a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept Todd as mayor pro temp.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? On aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Swish, what do you got for us?
Good afternoon, this month's report. We'll be working on, uh, me and Kim is working on, Kim and I is working on a new worksheet to add inside of the city package. That's why you guys can get down today. So y'all know what's going on, what me and Kim is doing out here. I would need to, I need to locate and talk to rehab, rehabilitation open pros to use their back truck to locate some water lines that we have that may be possibly leaked because there are gas lines right there and that backhoe, they went that backhoe. It was a no-no. So I want to locate these leaks and if the gas company calls this, I definitely, me and Kim will be reaching out to, to Iron Horse or Atmos. I want to also talk to the contractors about the coves that's closed up. Them guys, you know, the contractors came out, Iron Horse, they put their gas lines down and coves not, the water's not draining right. So I would like to talk to them guys about that also.
Now, they're working for Atmos, right?
Yes.
So we did this.
The fire, by the fire station and over there by the alley.
We can deal with Atmos if they don't give us satisfaction.
Okay. And it's a lot of, like I said, it's a lot of water leaks on East Water, East Cross Main and West Avenue that, I talked to a guy on West Avenue today. He said that this ditch has been flooded with like a swamp since Iron Horse left there. And me and Kim actually looked at the, the, I mean, I don't know if it's coming from a field because sometimes like when it dry up, it's dry, it's dry. But most of the time it's running water. And like, I don't really know what's going on. It only doing this like when it raining. I'm not sure where this water's coming from. Getting with Bowman about the sewer lines that need to be tapped over here on Second Avenue. Because them, them holes been, we've been having, we had guys to dig those holes and they supposed to be doing the tap fours. But I have to get with Bowman and Patterson because that, it's a, it's like four holes right there and kids walk by there every day. So I'm.
That's at that corner.
At that corner, so then everybody to it every month. Yes, sir.
I was gonna ask you about that someday.
Yes, sir. So I need to get with Bowman and Patterson, I can really depend on those guys. They're a large company and they'll knock it out. They might charge a little bit more, but, I mean, but it's not a, has.
That's been a long time.
Been really hard to get caught up on the morn due to all the rain. We still trying to get caught up. Most part we, we have where they're filling in the pothole with rose base coming out due to the rain. Also seeing new holes forming due to the rain. So that's a stroller right there at times. Perma pack, I mean, the, what is it called? The rock asphalt is working. But you see it's starting to settle. So, I mean, we just doing the best we can right now.
Do we have any material left?
No, no, sir.
So we need another full pallet?
We went through two pallets and we was stretching it.
So is it settling because of the rain that it's experienced or what?
It's settling because of the rain and cars going, because the cars going to drive on it. So, and the rain just make it settle even more. So, but it is by far the best, the best asphalt that we had. It's by far the best.
It's the one that that guy just came in repping?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. It says there.
Look, I want to go into this quick. This DuraPatch machine, that, that paperweight we got sitting out in that field out there. There's a, these people, what, what's the name of that?
I don't know the name of the company, but it's right there on the outside of here.
But they'll give us a bid on it, on what it will cost to fix it. Because it, the machine hoses, and it needs to be gone.
Our own, our own?
The DuraPatch machine?
Okay, okay. And the company where can fix it?
They're right up here in the corner of seventy-seven.
It's an A&amp;A auto.
Yeah.
It's what I bought my tire machine off of. It's awesome. Alan, I'll get talking. To get us, to get us an idea of what it would cost to get it going.
We get it going and we can try to, we run it, you know, just to see.
I'll go with you up there and talk to Alan, yeah.
Okay, because that'd be a lot cheaper than keep on rocking.
Yeah, he'll help us out.
Okay, and the Road Ranger, we finally have water. Been over three month process due to water ports. Water ports is hard to come by. I mean, you got these bigger cities. They, soon as something come in, these bigger cities say, hey, I want, and they getting it. So I gotta get parts as I can. So like with, with that being said, like even like just a, a physical simple meter or something like that, when I see it, I have to get it. So if not, we'll be in a bind, so. So now we, now the Road Ranger have water. Uh, we've been really busy turning off water meters this month. And we also have pulled a couple meters also, keeping up here. And Mr. Doug had a question about trees on this building that he's concerned is city property that might need help taking it down. So I wanted to get with y'all to see what y'all say, how y'all want to take care of this. If me and Kim have to take care of it, we have to get a sky lift. I'm not sure if y'all want us in a sky lift, but it's.
I want you in the sky.
It's treading on both sides of this building. And I think both sides is an alley. And I'm not sure y'all, how y'all want, Mr. Doug right here, you want to explain more?
I have, over the last couple of years, done all I can with trenching. With Kim's permission, I've, I've trenched as much as I could so water would run out. And I have even driven shorings in the ground. But I cannot do anything where those trees are. They're right against the building, plus they're beating that poor building to death. I want to, I want to repair it, make it look a lot nicer, and I can't do it with the trees right there. And they're pretty good sized trees. They're biggies. So I've started looking to see what it would cost me to cut them down and discovered that it's actually a city street, which would help me out. I'll do whatever's necessary, but they have to come down one way or the other, but if that one.
We'll check it too, see what we can do.
And if anyone have anything they want done or need to be done, do not be a stranger to the fill out work order. So we can get it done. Thank you for letting us serve our communities.
One thing I wanted to bring up, Swish, is we really need to, if we can, take an inventory of our cutoffs, water cutoffs around town and start testing them, see which ones working, which ones need to be worked on or replaced. Because, you know, we had problems last summer with some water leaks. And I think Rice Broadband helped us with some of those water leaks, but to cause them not to fix them. And we'd have to cut water off to large parts of town to keep water loss, you know, from draining our water town, so.
I'm glad you said that. With that being said, that, uh, with that being said, me and the Road Ranger guys, no, me and Bowman, we was looking for a water cutoff for the Road Ranger so them guys could put their water line in. And we get over there by Mr. Lockhart's house and we come, tried to turn that water line off and the valve would not, it was stuck, so it wouldn't move. So with that being said, we definitely do that and see what's, what working, what, what don't work.
You and I had talked about walking around and getting a map done last summer, when that blind broke last summer. We need to just go ahead and do that now. And I'll make time to come out here and do it with you and help you out with that. But the, the other leaks that we just got, you said that we had four leaks or whatever?
Yeah, I mean, with all this rain.
It's our turn.
I'm starting to see like water, just, we starting to see most.
Are we thinking most of this is Iron Horse?
I'm thinking it's a water, I'm thinking, everywhere there's a water leak, Iron Horse has.
Has been through.
Has been.
We need to nip this in the bud before we, you know.
But we can't really do nothing because, you know, it's all this rain, so.
No, I, I get that. We just, we need to get on top of it from our side. The other thing is drainage is not just because of the rains we've had, but it's, it's been a problem for a long time. Our ditches sometimes, some of them are gonna have to be cleaned out or at least gonna have to blade off the edge of the streets because there's grass is growing, it's higher than the pavement. And when it rains, it's, it's ponding and going back into the, the street. Do we have any equipment that can do that? Or is that something we need to try to get the county to come in and help us with?
We have a backhoe, we'll turn up the roads, just to be honest with you. You know, if we try to clean that backhoe, we'll turn, we'll turn it over. With that being said, West Avenue, they don't have, them guys, like, they don't have no coves. So with their water being drained, they, it's not doing nothing but draining on the side of road, turning up the roads. Which that one guy, he's suffering in that first, first home. Because it's just a swamp right there, then it gives, get off of his, uh, his, out of his little ditch, whatever, and it goes on everybody else, man. Nobody have a covert right there or, or a ditch.
Is there a way to be able to get a bar ditch through that area to be able to drain all that?
If, if you take out, if you take out a ditch, if you put ditches right there, they don't have no coves, so they gonna, they don't have a way to bag out.
So what is our solution to resolve it?
The homeowners have to buy coves or the city has to buy coves and get a ditch out?
Homeowner?
Yeah. We're not getting on that. Then we can do one with you. Well, we're gonna have to rotate that, probably. I don't know if we can do it all at one time, but. At some point, we're gonna have to start contacting folks and get, taking their temperature and getting their ideas about where they want to put in a covert with some gravel. But we've gotta do something to maintain our roads. But I'll talk to guys at precinct three and see what they have to offer on that as well. I don't know that we need to identify where, I mean, because it's everywhere. But, and I know we talked about, we get, I guess we'll go to fire department next. Carlos, you talked about being able to blow out some of those coves. I think we need to just come pull some big head on that, whatever y'all can do. It's pretty swampy right now.
Yeah, you don't want to do it right now, but yeah. Give it about, if we can get a good, dry week, we can get some people together and we can go blow out some of the coves now.
That would be good for those community service guys.
Volunteer fire. Let's go Fred, and then I'll come back to you. What is your report?
Inspections. Inspections are pretty slow. Some of them are passing out. I haven't seen anything new to start.
Okay, we'll go back to fire department.
Yeah, if, if we can get a good, dry week, we can get out. We'll have to put so much water through there, it, you know, we don't want to flood somebody's property outright as well, so. But yeah, we can definitely blow them out. Now, there's gonna be quite a few of them that we're not gonna be able to blow out. We just don't have, I mean, we can put two, three hundred PSI in there of water. And if it doesn't blow out, there's nothing, it's not gonna come out. That, that ten horn's gonna have to be replaced at that.
Do we have tools for putting those things up where they've been driven over and trimmed down?
You can sometimes use a handyman jack. If you get a good, solid ground, good, solid bedding, you can sometimes use a handyman to raise them up or to straighten them out a little bit.
I didn't know if there was a specific tool for it or not.
I mean, we, if we have, we might even be able to do some jaws training on doing, we put our hydraulic jaws for life. We can put it in there and open it up and spread it. We can do that on some of them too, so. It may, may look, may make them look square instead of brown, but. And we have some, what, twelve foot pipe poles, fifteen foot pipe poles that we can run. We can try to, if we get a hard, hard one, we can try to run the pipe pole through there and see if we can't break it loose. And if we just get a hole going, the water will be the rest of the job.
Right, yeah, we get it going, it, water will kind of create its own opening, just give it a chance.
And the one thing I have noticed, because I have been looking at them, is a lot of them are below ground. So, I mean, we would need somebody to go around and the ones that's below ground to dig them up.
Right.
Dig them out to where we can get to them. But this won't be, won't do a bit of good if we can't, if they're not dug out in the.
Sure. What else do you have for us?
Last month was a pretty decent month. Had ten medical runs, two accident calls, four fire calls, one mutual aid to Hillsboro, for a total of seventeen calls for the month of April. We have lost one of our brush trucks. Fire season is right, grass fire season is literally right around the corner. We have one brush truck in service right now out of three. One brush truck, we are trying to get the pump fixed, or switch out the pump. The other brush truck, I think you guys should have a quote on what it's gonna cost to fix of thirty-six thousand dollars. There's no way, it's in nineteen eighty-seven, we just looked it up, it is in eighty-seven, so it's not even worth trying to fix for thirty-six thousand. Thirty-six thousand dollars, we could probably find a good used chassis or brush, or something that we can use. But we definitely need to start taking into consideration how we can obtain a, another brush truck. Because grass season, like I said, is literally right around the corner. By July, we'll be fighting them.
What else involved in a brush truck?
At least a two hundred fifty gallon tank.
We're talking the F-two fifty, F-five fifty?
We can do F-two fifty with a, it's, it's, it's a small tank.
Right.
Uh, you know, normally fighting a grass fire, you're gonna empty that tank in a matter of minutes and it, it doesn't really good. We would like to get probably, given what you're.
At least some, at least five hundred.
Five hundred's a minimum gallon?
They're five hundred down.
Five, five hundred gallons is what you're saying is a minimum?
It's not the minimum. You can go, you can put.
I'm saying y'all, y'all are saying that you would like it to be our minimum.
Five hundred be best. For everyone, if we was to go on a fire alone, we could pretty much get it out. Without having to call for it, it leave or neighborhood department.
All right, so that's, we would prefer a diesel, the one that went down is a gas. Gas engines, they're good enough for what we, what we use them for. We need a good solid diesel engine in them. You gotta think those things, while you're out there driving, they're sucking in all that smoke and the whole time they're sucking in that smoke is just killing that motor out on a gas engine.
Is this a two ton or large?
It is a tuna, half ton, I think I've seen on the title.
Yes, two and a half.
What's a ton?
I think it's two and a half ton. It's a big, it's over underneath the water panel now, so it's a big truck. It's a, it's a F-eight hundred.
Oh, it is.
It's a F-eight hundred, so it's a big truck. And we already have the big forestry truck that we got a few years ago. That's a bit, we call it a deuce. A big, humongous red thing, looks like a beast. It's still operational, but we can actually do it, but we need, we're needing something smaller. So we can get under brush and we can get into close areas with a smaller truck. This, the only truck we have now that runs is, if it's a small area that we have to get into, we're not gonna be able to make it. We'll have to wait till it gets to a big area to get in with that truck.
Have you applied for any grants?
We have two grants out now. We just got looked over from the forestry service on one grant last month.
On both of them.
On both, okay.
On both grants.
We just got them over on both grants, so we tried.
Well, I know.
Right.
That's all you can do.
And I think.
That's all you can do.
I think one of the main reasons why we got looked over is because of the big fires they had out in West Texas last year. I think they lost a lot of equipment.
Yeah.
So just my personal opinion, I think a lot of stuff went out there to them. But I know Bertens, just right the road.
Yeah.
They just got a new one from the forestry service, so I don't.
It's a hidden mess.
And it's hard to say how people, what they're thinking and what.
Yeah, but you gotta get them in though.
Right, right.
You know that.
Yeah, and, and we, Jalen's been doing a great job on keeping up with the grants, looking for them and applying for them.
Does the Army Corps of Engineers or Ford Hood ever have any surplus, is it?
They do sometimes, uh.
Sometimes you get lucky if you.
But those, those things go quick.
Yeah.
I mean, you've got to, you've gotta be watching it every single day. And, I mean, there was one department, I just, I showed Jalen and the other officers. Uh, I got a pumper engine for four thousand dollars. You just gotta catch them at the right time and.
Well, y'all know more about that than I do. I'm just curious.
I mean, we've been looking, every website we can possibly find for government surplus, there's a place in Fort Worth that we've been monitoring and watching. It's just, nothing's there.
Places that buy, or other companies like that buy the surplus and then sell it or?
Yeah.
Auction. Can we buy a water truck and convert? Is this possible? Is that way too much money? Is that way too much issue?
Well, you, you gotta have, you're talking about like a big tank truck, water truck that has the nozzles on it?
Or is that just really going down the wrong path?
That's going down the wrong path. We, we need something with a red line that we can pull off.
Dedicated.
Yeah, you wanna be able to stand up in the bed of the truck, the driver drives you where you need to go, you spray the water, shut it off. Truck you're talking about, those things spray what, too much water at one time.
Right, I didn't know if it was possible to convert those with some kind of package. If there was some company out there that does fire, I, I, I don't know. I'm, I was just starting.
I mean, we could use a chassis of one.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out thirty-six thousand dollars can buy you a lot of chassis, right?
Right.
You can buy two, two or three chassis.
I mean, we have a complete setup that works fine on the truck that we just took out of service, that thirty-six thousand dollars repaired. We have the skid unit on it. If we can just find a chassis that that skid unit would fit on, then we could do that.
That may be a, okay.
I mean, if we find a good decent chassis, probably preferably four wheel drive.
Right.
Then we can go off road with it.
I'm gonna talk to Alan down there about it as well, because he buys those, I mean, he buys all kinds of trucks like that all the time.
Well, that's who actually gave us the bid on the repairs. That's who we take our car, our, our equipment to repair it, so.
Well, we'll try to figure something out.
How many did it on equipment other than that?
We're doing good. We just bought a new exhaust fan from a grant. We've been getting grants, but no grants for vehicles.
Right.
Uh, it was a health and safety grant that Jalen got us that we just bought a new exhaust fan on. I mean, equipment, other than being old equipment that we're having to maintain, we're having to catch up on maintenance, but it's, it's usable. And we just got new gear. A lot of us got new funky gear, most of us got new funky gears. So it's mainly just the vehicles right now that we're having the issue with.
Carlos, I, I recall in the previous meeting, uh, city council meeting, you making mention of a marquee that the, uh, volunteer fire department acquired either through grant or gift, I'm not certain, but what is the status on that marquee?
Lady brought that? We had to let that marquee go. The grant we had was only for five thousand dollars. The marquee was gonna cost twenty-five thousand dollars. So we went with banners and flyers instead. So you actually start seeing, I just told the guys tonight, we need to get them out, well, recruitment banners are fixing to go out and then we got some more guys that's gonna go door to door hanging recruitment flyers on doors to try to recruit some people, get people interested in coming over and helping us out. So anybody in here that wants to come up to fire department, you're warned well.
Thank you.
That it?
That's it.
We go to municipal court.
Uh, court's been really good. Uh, we had ninety-four citations, uh, brought in for the hunt. We had a hundred and thirty citations posted out uh, for the month. Average, um, speed over the speed limit was twenty-one point three five miles per hour. We actually don't have court this month. Um, because everything last month, it was just not something we could get scheduled and the judge told me just to cancel it. So don't have courts this month, but we will start again next month with pre-trials. It's been fine.
Thank you. Police.
Uh, two schools long citations, six traffic accidents, two, uh, towed vehicles, a hundred and forty-six calls for service, one under citations issued, forty-one warnings, one crash report, eighteen, uh, agency assists, and one public and cops arrest, seven welfare checks, seven traffic hazards, and ten, um, code violation, uh, certified letters sent out.
Uh, one question. What, why haven't we brought up revenue from last year's toll? You know, revenue being down so.
Yeah, I, I mean, it, just a, a lot of stuff happening and then cars and all those kind of things. Um, and so, uh, yeah, it's, I mean, it definitely is a concern, so I'm paying close attention. It's gonna get better soon.
I'm thinking on the, the eight oh five web, I've heard some talking about some incidents. Did adult protective services ever get involved?
Um, so, so adult protective services have been called many times.
Right.
Um, and then this last time, Kim actually, I think either he called or she ended up calling him. She even had a conversation with him because it was, I mean, the guy was coming down and trying to get rides from the police department and ob- obviously, we're not a taxi service. We do do that for, you know, to assist a citizen if something was wrong. Um, but, uh, it, it just like every time he turned around, he was coming and trying to get rides and stuff, so.
Chris, that's the same guy that's been to my house a couple of times. I, when I'm at, working outside in the yard, he'll come up to me and ask me if I could give him a ride with it.
That's him.
That's him.
And for both times I called him, I, I couldn't be there.
Well, they just not doing any, they don't protect the service. Or do the, or do the people say they don't want their help? I'm trying to figure out why they don't, why they can't resolve some of this.
I, I don't know why, Mr. Adams. I mean, like, I've reached out to Mr. Adams many times because they claim it's a halfway house. Uh, it really doesn't, I don't think meets the standards for a halfway house, so I'm not real sure what's going on with that, but, um.
What is the address under discussion, the address?
Eight oh five web.
Yeah, and so nuisance abatement wise, we've talked about it many times in the past, just because we get so much calls. I mean, we called while he was crazy there. With medicals and.
Yeah, we have, we have heard this before. We have.
Yeah.
Done anything, or we, we.
What's our next step to be able to do something?
That would be a better question for attorney, probably.
Well, do we have any, uh, contact APS?
Adopters, yeah, sure, yeah, adopt protect services.
Get that to me. I may give them a call and see if I can get them to do something.
Yeah, I just, I don't, I don't know what the standards are on it.
Well, I don't either. I, maybe they can get, tell us.
Little insight, yeah.
Why they're not do, getting any resolution.
Yeah.
They've been called, like you say, a bunch of times.
Yeah, they, I mean, they go to.
For some reason they can't do it. We need to know what it is.
And sometimes they go to like, uh, you know, most of them gets transported and there's a couple of them there that are prior military, so they get transported to the VA. And then they come back and the same things are happening over and over again, so I'm not real sure.
Has it ever been completely vacant, or is there always at least somebody there?
I don't think it's ever completely vacant, yeah.
And tell the student that it wasn't as bad. The other two.
Yeah, so the other two are just medical calls. They're not really an inconvenience to us. And he's, I mean, he's a veteran, so, I mean, it's, it's, you know, they're gonna have medical issues. I mean, it's just the way it is. Uh, but, uh, until this one showed up, I think this one was bothering the church at one point, I think. I, I mean, it was, that was. Every now and then they get some really bad ones, and then there's some that we always were having to take up to Hickory Trails and all those kind of things, uh, for mental health issues. And so we were out of town a lot with that, taking back and forth up to Hickory Trails.
How, the, the living conditions inside of the house?
Not very great.
Uh, one of the things I thought of the other day was, you know, we have a program where we, uh, inspect rental property when there's a new rent or we might to, may, maybe we could change our ordinance to require inspection there.
That would be fantastic. The only thing I don't know is, I think, that, I think the water bill's staying in one person's name, right? And so they're never changing the water, so we don't know, you know, that they're bringing different people in, they're in and out, and we don't know, so.
But we could, I'm just speculating now, so let's, just, just say we should change the ordinance to say that a halfway house has to be inspected every so often. And this is your first inspection.
Yeah, I don't know.
And maybe do that and then go in there and, and make them address some of those things.
I know at one point, I believe the sewer was going onto the ground, um, from like one of the bathtubs or something, and, and I had to call Eddie and have a conversation on that one. I just, yeah, it's just been often.
We'll see what we can do. Maybe our next agenda, yeah. I'm just, just curious about that, 'cause I've heard you talk about, I know y'all are tired of it, something that's.
I'll, uh, get ahold of dispatch and get the call log from there so that you can see again. The medical ones really aren't much of an inconvenience. It's, it's conceivable that people are gonna have medical issues and sometimes it's often, it's just the way it is, but you know, it's the other stuff, the going downtown and going in there and bugging people for money and asking for rides and stuff like that. It's just, it's, it's often, so.
Well, they're kind of isolated here and they don't have anything to occupy their time. I understand that it's
and no vehicles.
Almost inevitable you're gonna have some of that stuff, so.
And no vehicles. I don't understand why there's no transportation. I mean, if it's a facility, then it needs transportation, in my opinion, but.
Exactly.
I just, it's, it's poor that I'm here. Is there anything else you wanted to add?
Uh, that's it, right now?
Okay. That brings us to adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn? I will make a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. Just adjourn, thank you everybody for being here.